Good morning, I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, December 7, 2010. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. We have a motion by Mr. Bazler.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda is a presentation of a proclamation for the Work Ready Program. And we have two individuals here from the chamber. I'm going to read the proclamation, and Kevin, you and Taylor may have some additional comments that you'd like to make, and then we'd like to present the certificate to you. This is in support of the Georgia Work Ready Program in Henry County. Whereas Henry County is committed to education and to improving public high school graduation rates to attract businesses to our area, and whereas Henry County is transforming the county by making our citizens our number one competitive advantage in delivering workforce development tools to companies for greater success, and whereas the Governor's Office of Workforce Development has developed the Work Ready Program to encourage communities to take steps to prepare their workforce and increase high school graduation rates, and whereas Henry County recognizes that in order for companies to compete in a global economy, they must have access to the types of long-term, quantifiable labor pools that the Work Ready Program develops, and now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that it fully supports the Henry County Chamber of Commerce and the Henry County Economic Development Authority in their efforts to improve the job training and marketability of Henry County's workforce and to bring future economic growth to our community through the Georgia Work Ready Program in Henry County, the 7th day of December, 2010, having been duly adopted by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. And if gentlemen would like to come forward and maybe make some comments about the program, I'm sure our board would love to hear more about it.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, Board of Commissioners, for your support on this. As Chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, I represent the business community, and I would like to thank you for everything that you have done to support this. This is further solidifying this county that we all call home as the diamond on the south side of Atlanta. We strive every day to make this a better community, and this is one more step that we've taken under the leadership of Kevin Smith and the Chamber Committee. We've made this happen. Thank you again. I'd like to turn over to Kevin and just give a little bit of details about the program.
Sure. We're very close to getting our certification through the state. In fact, Kate Pippen is up at the Georgia Work Ready Meeting upstairs, up at the Atlanta Center. We're about 250 tests away. We have 1,400 county residents who've taken the certification. And what the certification will mean, for example, tomorrow I'll be meeting with the waffle bakers. They're very interested in using Work Ready to try to select workers for their program. So it's something that'll just help bring more jobs to Henry County. So we appreciate your support. Thank you.
If you would come over here, we'd like to present the proclamation. The next item on the agenda is Planning and Zoning Services, a resolution supporting the development of a 2011 Livable Centers Initiative Supplemental Study in Providing Matching Funds. Our presenter is Stacy Jordan, Planner Two, handout number one. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. The item before you today is a resolution supporting an application that the staff would like to make to the Atlanta Regional Commission. This is the application period for the 2011 LCI supplemental study. This supplemental study would be the next step of the LCI that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners back on July the 6th of this year. The study area is in your exhibit books, and it's displayed on the overhead. It's the area along the western side of I-75 between Hudson Bridge Road and Jonesboro Road. And if you'll recall, one of the recommendations of the original LCI study was that a western parallel connector be built. The recommendation included two alternate alignments for the road, and we would wish for the supplemental study to determine the final alignment of this road and to also determine elevation and alignment of important cross streets, such as the bridge that was a part of the LCI study over I-75, as well as the crossing at Jonesboro Road and the terminus at Jonesboro Road. And so the resolution that's before you is necessary for us to make application, and it simply says that the Board supports the application but also agrees to fund the 50% match. This project is part of the Transportation Improvement Program, which is part of the regional transportation plan at ARC. There is $750,000 that's allocated to this project, and what we would wish to do is to use $50,000 of that to leverage a $100,000 study. And so the staff respectfully requests that the Board approve this resolution.
Stacy, this money was allocated in SPOLOX III. Is that correct? The match was out, is available in the SPOLOX III program?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
Does any Board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
Just a question. Mr. Jordan, do you have any idea how many property owners are impacted by the alignment of the road, whichever design is taking place, whichever design is chosen?
I do not know a number of parcels or property owners. The area is relatively undeveloped. I don't expect that there would be a lot of displacement.
And where the road is going, is there, is there present zoned property in those, in that area?
Yes. The area that is north of Jodico Road, in the vicinity of I-75, is zoned commercial at this time. And this new alignment would go through that area, and this supplemental study would determine the alignment in that area.
And I know this is obviously a discussion for another day, but do the conditions that are currently, that are currently under the present zoning will apply in the new LCI?
Yes. One area that I had failed to mention is at Hudson Bridge Road. There is property that's zone C-3 behind the fast food restaurants, and you would notice a stubout where we expect for the road to end on the northern portion of the corridor. There are properties such as that one that there are no zoning conditions that we're aware of. For other properties for which there are zoning conditions, those zoning conditions would remain in place. Also, though the LCI study itself has been adopted, part of the implementation of that is for the Board at a later date to adopt an overlay district, to amend the zoning ordinance. And that overlay district may impose additional regulations that the properties will have to adhere to as well.
Anyone else with a question or comment? Not Mr. Roark. This lies in your district, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second? All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll have a second.
Have a second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Mr. Stamey?
Got a comment.
Mike, there is, there is funds secured through SPOLOX III. It was designated for this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Just for clarification purposes, the LCI is for the road alignment only. It's not doing anything with zoning of property. It's simply to, there was $2 million in SPOLOX III for the design of that parkway from Hudson Bridge to Jonesboro Road. This is simply a study where the Atlanta Regional Commission will commit $50,000 to meet with the county and its experts to determine what is the best alignment before a design moves forward. That's all this is.
Yeah, and I'd like to clarify, the reason that I certainly seconded the motion and supported is because this is an opportunity for us to get half the funding back on the study. As far as the LCI itself and the overlay, I do have concerns about that. I've expressed them earlier in previous meetings, and I won't go into that today. But as far as, this is an opportunity for us to get up to $50,000 back on the study, which we'll have to have anyhow. So it's just...
I just got a comment, or maybe a question. I was actually trying to, when the motion was made, I was trying to get my head around the issue about some property owners will have to adhere to, would you just, could I ask him to just go through that again? Because it's, you got people that own property on that, on that roadway that, in other words, their property's going to be rezoned whether they want it rezoned or not. Is that kind of, is that, that's kind of what I was hearing, and I was trying to get my head around it, so.
We're talking about, we're talking about two different issues. Currently, there is no road there.
Right.
So you have property owners from that one interchange all the way down to Jonesboro Road that don't even have access to their property because there's no road. All this study is doing is determining what the best alignment is for a future road.
Okay.
Then, once the future road is determined, as for part of the activity center that has, that is on the comprehensive land use plan, will come back at a later date and master plan out the corridor like we would other activity centers.
But I thought I understood him to say that we would have to amend the land use.
That's in the future when we talk about the, with the overlay and the planning of the activity center. That has nothing to do with the road. We're talking about the road now.
I know we're talking about two different issues, but when you started talking about a minute, I was trying to think, you know, okay, we're going, if we're going to amend it. That's, that's fine. I'm good with the road part. I just, the other part was getting a little fuzzy.
And Chair, I have a question. Michael, this was also part of the ARC grant, just a couple hundred thousand dollars several years ago, to do a, a design or study on this piece of property as far as the activities center was concerned. Didn't we just win a grant two years ago, 18 months ago, on this same thing?
We did.
Not on the road design, but the entire?
On the overall LCI study itself. That's correct.
Do you know what the dollar amount was of that?
Hundred thousand, and we matched 25,000.
So it's about a hundred and a quarter, correct?
Correct. The total cost for the LCI study of that, ARC put in 100, 100,000. There's an area on that match.
And based upon that study, that study determined that this is where the road should lay, based upon the study, correct?
Yes, sir. It determined that there needed to be a corridor on the western side of 75 connecting Hudson Bridge with Jonesboro Road, but it left it up to a later study to determine the alignment. And that's what this supplemental study would do.
I don't think anybody on this board would disagree that we definitely need a frontage road somewhere in that vicinity, especially with the growth that's coming from Eagles Lane all the way to Jonesboro Road. I was just trying to determine if, like he was saying, are we actually condemning property or rezoning property? We're not doing it. We're just simply agreeing to do the design, correct?
This has nothing to do with land use. It's simply about this transportation corridor on the western side of 75.
Okay. Thank you.
And with the LCI programs, once you, once you receive an LCI grant, then future projects are eligible for more LCI funding through this program. So this is a second phase that was based on the first hundred thousand dollar grant. So there will be other monies available also in the future as we move forward in planning the area.
Chair, based on the discussion that we've just had, we're, we're not 100% sure that a study can be spent out of our SPOLOX dollars, because SPOLOX dollars are supposed to be for construction, engineering, and things like that. So can we add a, a sentence under there to say that this is a grant, and we can pay for this out of grant match that we have in our general fund, that if we determine that it can't be spent out of the SPOLOX dollars, that we will use the grant match to fund this $50,000 grant, just to make sure we don't spend something that we shouldn't spend through our SPOLOX dollars?
So design is not eligible to be funded out of SPOLOX?
Design is, but this is a study that, I don't, I don't know if this qualifies as design. It kind of seems like you do a study, then you go design the road, and I just don't want to, I don't want to misspend the SPOLOX dollars. But we do have a grant match in our general fund that will more than cover this particular issue if we have to go that route. We will determine, we'll, we'll give it to the county attorney and make that determination if we think this will qualify for SPOLOX expense. But I don't want to have to come back again and say, well, we said we were going to do it out of SPOLOX and have to do it out of another funding. If we can just put some kind of language in there that it's either or, whichever one is deemed appropriate, it would be, it would be cleaner for the SPOLOX program.
When is the deadline for filing for the grant, or applying for the grant?
We have to have our application to the Atlanta Regional Commission on Friday, December the 17th.
Okay, so this is the last meeting we'll have before that's due?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Rocky?
I think, I understand that we're calling it a study, but it's kind of like a preliminary design, and we've done that in the past on, on projects. Because when we design a project like, for example, King Mill Road, you know, we didn't know where the road was going to go, so we'd have to do a concept. So this is kind of like a concept. Actually, you got two roads or two alignments, and you're going to define the road. So if we would have got outside engineer to do this work, it would probably cost a lot more, and he was probably going to come out with one or two, three alignments, between one and three alignments, and would have to choose for one only. So I think this would be considered part of this preliminary design, that in the future, when the project comes out for a completely designed of the road, we don't have to spend money and time because we already have a concept, we know exactly where the road is. Apparently, you're going to have the alignment, the profile. So basically, we don't have the drainage, and we don't have quantity. So a great portion of the design will be completed, you know, the preliminary part. So I think, I would think that it would be considered part of a SPOLOX, could be used as SPOLOX money, especially it's only $50,000 out of the 2 million that we have.
Now, Chair, for the sake of safety and being sure, I would ask that that sentence that Mr. Bush added about the either or from bond, not from bond, from grant funds be added to this, to this motion, so that it can be determined by the attorney, so that nobody gets into problems with misuse of SPOLOX funds, if in fact that is true, the way it would be. That way, we have two avenues for the funding of this, this project.
Mr. Roark, would you like to amend your motion? Would you amend your second?
I would amend my second, too.
Any further discussion on this item?
I just got one more quick question. What's your best guess on how long this study takes and before we move to the next step? Or is that even, is that even able to estimate?
We will know if we have been chosen by ARC in March of 2010, and I anticipate the study to last about a year. 2011, yes.
Any further discussion on this item? All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a public hearing. Walker Construction Products LLC of Jonesboro, Georgia requests modification to zoning conditions to allow outside storage and a reduction in buffers for a property located at 1940 Highway 42 South in Landlots 150 and 251 of the 7th District. The property is located within Commission District Number One. Our presenter is Jeremy Gilbert, Planning and Zoning, and that's Exhibit Number Eight. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Board Members. The request that is before you, the applicant received rezoning in 1984 on October 16th from RA to M2. The property was conditioned with two conditions. The conditions that were placed on it was that there would be no outside storage, and that there would be a 75-foot screening buffer of evergreens along 42, except at the entrance of the property. The property has been occupied by Walker Construction Materials for a number of years. It has outside storage currently, and it has no 75-foot buffer. The applicant now is looking to remove those conditions to have the property in compliance, not meeting those conditions. As well as if these conditions are removed, they would not be violating any ordinance requirement. The ordinance would not require a 75-foot buffer along the frontage, and the M2 zoning district does allow outside storage, being that it's the highest zoning district that we have in the county. We'll answer any questions that you have.
Does anyone on the Board have a question for Jeremy? If not, I'd like to ask if the applicant or their representative is, is here this morning, and if you would like to step up and please state your name and address for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
My name is Monty Corsi, Corsi Properties. We're at 1239 Martin Mill Road in Moreland, Georgia. We represent the, the owner, Walker Concrete, and they have this piece of property that has, has the proper zoning, but there's a couple of restrictions on that zoning that prohibits outside storage of property, of materials on that property, even though it's, you know, already zoned M2 for industrial use. And there was an old buffer, 75-foot wide buffer strip along Highway 42 also on that property. We'd like to have those two restrictions removed, so it could be more fully used for industrial purposes.
Does any Board member have a question for the applicant?
I have a comment that I'd like to make before the end, I mean...
Before the end? You want to wait till I call for?
Absolutely.
Public comment? All right, this is a public hearing, and is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? If not, Mr. Holder?
Madam Chair, as you see, this property was zoned in 1984. At that time, there was no industrial activity along Highway 42. And if you're looking at the minutes from 1984, you saw that the, the applicant was represented, that was represented was Ms. Gardner. She lived across the street from this subject property. That is probably the reason that she asked for a 75-foot buffer. Since that time, we have Miller Refrigeration, we have the Big Snapper Warehouse, we have the strip center that's directly across the street from this subject property. We have mini warehouses just to the north of this property. We have the PVA, Police Benevolent Association, right across the street. And then on down the road a little further, there's Walker Concrete, Blue Circle Concrete, Park 42 West, all industrial sites that required, that nobody required any buffering from. And as the applicant and Mr. Gilbert also said, it's currently being, up to, what, a year ago or whatever, it was being used as an industrial site without door storage, outside storage. So even though, I guess it was in violation of the ordinance, nobody probably acknowledged it because nobody along that roadway was required, that same, those two restrictions of no outside storing, storage, and the 75-foot planted evergreen buffer. So I honestly, I've not heard anything about it from the community. I can't imagine why anybody would object to it because it's, it's not existed anywhere else along that particular strip of Highway 42. And also the property, the subject property, the Ms. Gardner who had that property rezoned, the person, because she has long since passed away, the person who owns the property where she lived now has a sign in the architectural commercial. So I mean, there wasn't, whether it does or not, we never know, but that's, it's, it's there.
That's that little white frame house that's right there on...
A little of that.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Well, if there's no further questions from the Board, I'll, this lies in your district, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the request to remove the two conditions as specified.
You have a motion to approve? Seconded by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item is under Public Safety, a resolution to approve the use of asset forfeiture and seized funds for the public safety training facility. Our presenter is Major Jason Bolton of the Police Department, Exhibit Number Two. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Board. In 2008, the county purchased property along Stroud Road for the purpose of developing a public safety training center. The agency heads for the Police, Fire, and Sheriff's Department agreed to divide this property into two sections. One would be used by law enforcement, and the other was to be used by the Fire Department. Members of the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department on the law enforcement side met and developed a plan of construction for the property that would meet the training needs of both agencies. This plan was divided into multiple phases that would, whose construction would take place over the course of several years. The construction of a permanent, safe, and fully functional firing range was considered a top priority for both agencies. Maintaining proficiency with firearms is not only a high liability area, but annual qualification is a requirement by the state. Currently, neither agency has a suitable location to accomplish this. This is the reason that the construction of a firing range was proposed in Phase One of the master plan for the property. Yesterday, Captain Going presented not only the master plan for the property, but detailed the specifics for the proposed range project. It is the construction of the firing range that brings me here this morning on behalf of the Police Department to ask the Board to authorize the department to use a portion of seized drug funds in the amount of $34,000 to use for the construction of the range.
I'd like to comment that Captain Going did an excellent job in putting that presentation together and presenting it to the Board yesterday. And I encourage our citizens, if they have not had an opportunity to view the meeting from yesterday, to, to take advantage of that and go online if, if they're not able to get that on Channel 14. And certainly a great use of seized drug funds. And I don't know if any Board member has a question pertaining to this item?
Madam Chair, do you?
Mr. Stamey?
Jason, yesterday on the presentation, I think we're looking at a total cost of 105, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. 105,370 and 77 cents.
We're taking that figure and dividing it by three, correct?
Somewhat. I believe the Sheriff's Department is putting up 34,000, and we're asking to use 34,000. I think the remainder is 37,000, actually, 370.
Okay.
And this morning, you were asking for the 34 for the Police Department.
For the Police Department, yes.
The sheriff will come back at a later date.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, one question. How long will it take for completion of the fire, the Phase One of the firing range?
We hope to have Phase One completed by April or May of 2011.
Okay. Good. Any further questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you approving the use of the seized asset funds in the amount of $34,000, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bowman. I almost called you Boulder. Mr. Bowman, seconded by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
It's going to happen. You're right. The next item is under Finance. It's a resolution to approve the redistribution of SPOLOX II capital contingency funds. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director, Exhibit Number Three.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Board Members. A couple of weeks ago, we came before the Board and did a cleanup of the SPOLOX I fund and, or actually a closeout of the SPOLOX I fund and a cleanup of the SPOLOX II fund. And in doing so, it, the cleanup left an $800,000 amount of money in our contingency for capital projects. The WASH SPOLOX fund was, was drawn up. 70% of the funds are spent for roads, and 30% are spent for capital, and therefore we have a contingency that is broken out the same way. There's a road capital and a contingency capital. And all we're discussing today is the capital money that was left over. And we had talked to Districts 1, 2, 3, and 4 about splitting this money, and I had, District 1 wanted to put 200,000 at Sandy Ridge Park. District 2 was splitting his between North Mount Carmel Park... District 2 was splitting his between North Mount Carmel Park with $125,000 and $75,000 at North Forty Park. District 4 was putting $200,000 at Mosley Park. And District 3 was gonna do $175,000 at Heritage Park and $25,000 at North Ola Park. And that will be a change in the resolution because right now, we only have $200,000 at Heritage. We're gonna break it between Heritage and North Ola Park. And again, this is, the District 5, in Resolution Number 10125, several months ago, we had to add $477,000 to a particular project up in the 5th District. And therefore, since he got $477,000 at that point, we felt like it was fair to divide the other excess money between Departments 1, 2, 3, and 4, each getting $200,000. We're just asking that the board allow us to make these changes and put the money into the accounts out of the contingency account.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before your resolution. And that resolution will have the correction of $175,000 to Heritage Park and $25,000 to North Ola. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item is under SPOLOST. A resolution designating Harris Drive, New Hope Road, and Mount Bethel Road at State Route 81 as SPOLOST III Transportation Improvement Projects. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, SPOLOST Transportation Project Director, Exhibit Number Four. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Board Members. We are requesting the designation of Harris Drive, New Hope Road, and Mount Bethel Road as State Route 81. Funding for this project is available in District 1, projects accounts that are under budget. Here's the list on the screen on the projects that we're looking, there's about eight or so projects that are under budget. Some have been completed, some are under construction, but were significantly on the contract scheme under budget. So, we feel like we have enough money to fund this, these three projects.
Have reports like this been generated for all districts with the, that show cost savings on the various projects?
Not yet, ma'am, just this district. The other districts will still have some bigger projects ongoing. So, District 1 has completed a lot of projects already, just because they were small projects. So, eventually, we will have more projects coming forward on savings.
Mr. Stamey?
Rocky, the very first one, Bethany Road and 81, the 200, is that 280 or 260, I keep? Okay, that's not good this morning. But does that also reflect the $50,000 that's coming from C V S on that corner? Did we ever get that? Mr. Holder, does it not reflect that?
It's kinda like that one yesterday about King Mill and the 200,000 because the 200,000's not showing in that either.
No, it's not, it's not showing yet. So, when the 50 comes, I think that's on the District 1 side.
It's on District 1's side.
So, he will have an additional $50,000 for the records.
But I think the red light's hanging in the middle of the road, so we'll share some expense.
That's fine, pay me for half.
I just wanna make sure, I didn't know if that reflected it.
Any other questions? All right, if not, Mr. Holder, this lies in your district, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution to approve a budget amendment transferring funds from SPOLOST III District 1 project accounts to other projects in District 1, and that's gonna be Exhibit Number Five.
A budget amendment in the amount of $3,680,000 is needed to cover the design, construction, and related costs on the above projects that mentioned. Funding for this project, budget amendment is available, as I mentioned before, on District 1 accounts that are under budget. And as you can see, there's the list of projects that are on there and where the monies are gonna be allocated for the three projects on the screen.
Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make a comment for those that might not understand why these roads have just reappeared. I know Mr. Romero just said that they are designated SPOLOST projects, and they are. But to clear up designation, these projects were part of a list of roads that, for District 1, as well as each district, had lists of roads when SPOLOST came, SPOLOST III came up. But when we were capped it with a conservative number on our budget, we had to drop certain roads, even though they stayed on the list. They were designated as a road project, they were just not funded. And with these cost savings that we've had in the first round of SPOLOST, it's afforded us an opportunity to now go back and fund some of the roads that were not designated, or that were designated but not funded. So, I just wanna make the record clear that these are not roads that we just pulled out of the air to put in to pay because that's certainly in violation of SPOLOST. So, it's due to the cost savings that we've incurred on the first round of SPOLOST. And I'm certainly proud to see this, and this will allow us to do minimal projects in other districts, as well as in District 1, that wouldn't have been done had the, I guess this is a good side of the economy in the fact that we've been getting some bids that have been lower than what we had anticipated.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Holder, this lies in your district, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution to approve the supply service contract for materials and field testing services, and that's going to be Exhibit Number Six.
First, county departments require material and testing services for individual projects. Having a contract for materials and field testing services allows to a quick access of these services and products without the necessity of bidding each time that we require this. The prices are guaranteed for a maximum of two years. Seal bids were solicited for the materials and field testing services. The staff recommends a multiple award to be awarded as a unit contract to Universal Engineering Science and Construction Material Services. Funding for these services is available in each individual project account.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the service contract with Universal Engineering, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The final item under SPOLOST is a resolution to approve change orders for the South Bethany Road and East Atlanta Road Bridge Transportation Improvement Projects, and that's Exhibit Number Seven.
South Bethany Road from Jackson Street to West Price Drive and also East Atlanta Road Bridge are designated SPOLOST III Transportation Improvement Projects. Staff is requesting approval of a Georgia Power change order in the amount of $74,293.66 on South Bethany Road for additional pole relocation, not originally in conflict with the road work, and in the amount of $22,027.66 on East Atlanta Road Bridge for tree work and eastman acquisition, not included on the original estimate. On South Bethany, Georgia Power had to relocate four additional poles. They had to do additional tree work removal. They had to add two additional poles for span guide wires. Additional service included traffic control for flaggers. This was right there inside the city limits, which, as you all know, is very narrow, so they had to have traffic control. Plus, they had to hand dig the holes on five locations due to conflicts with other utilities. And doing this by hand, it just added man-hours for them. And on East Atlanta Bridge, the work included tree removal, eastman acquisition, as I mentioned before. Three pole locations were inaccessible to them with their equipment. They were too far away, and they had to be hand-dogged. I'll take any questions.
Does anyone have a question pertaining to this item? If not, you have, Mr. Bowman?
Rocky, who performed the original estimates?
Georgia Power.
So, Georgia Power had an original estimate of $50,000 and a change order for more than double their original estimate? Well, not more than double, but 75% of their original budget for a change order.
Correct.
The same thing Georgia Power had, almost, so the original estimates are pretty poor?
I would say that, sir, yes, sir.
Do we rely on their original estimates, though?
Yes, yes, that's, we budget for them originally. You know, once they, once we finish our design, we provide that information to them, and that's how they come up with their estimates.
Just seems strange that it would more than double on each one. The original estimate's $50,000, and the additional cost is $75,000. Maybe they need some new estimators at Georgia Power, I don't know.
It just seems odd that somebody could miss it that far. And I understand, and I know exactly the situation, and you and I have been out several times on issues that were on that particular road. Has nothing to do with the fact of the underestimating or whatever, but this is a section of the road that the city paid a half million, the City of Locust Grove paid a half million dollars for that actually goes out to the senior activity center, and that was part of that SPOLOST. That doesn't, that doesn't stop the fact of underestimating. I just don't understand it, I don't.
That would put most private companies out of business, like mine. I'm just, you know, anyway, that was just a comment. And it really wasn't a question because I don't guess there's anything we can do about it.
Right, and they're the only one. Right, it's not like we can pick and choose who's the provider. So, unfortunately, on these two projects, it's not something that we see a lot. But I think there's been other power companies that we do get a little bit closer than they do.
On South Bethany, that was four pole relocations plus two additional poles?
That's correct. In addition, in addition to the ones that they had estimated.
That's strong.
Any other questions or comments? And if not, you have a resolution before you approving the change order, and I'll entertain a motion.
See, I say reluctantly approve.
We have a reluctant motion from Mr. Holder. Is there a reluctant second?
I would very reluctantly second the motion.
All in favor? Motion reluctantly carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone sign up for public comments? County manager, anything for public session?
I would just like to add a comment to the Georgia Power discussion. Where we do have options, like at North Mount Carmel, we do exercise those. And I believe that saves us a little money. And we can follow up on this discussion. Rocky and I have talked about this issue. We've talked about some estimates that we get from other utility companies that are, in most cases, they should be conservative, but they turn out to be not. So, those discussions will continue.
It is very frustrating for the board because we, they have us over a barrel, you know, and we're trying to pinch pennies and watch everything as closely as we can. And in cases like this, we have absolutely no recourse.
I understand.
It is very frustrating. Miss County Attorney, anything for public session? The upcoming meetings and events. Today at 4:00 p.m., there will be a dedication of a plaque in honor of the late Freddie Etheridge. For those of you who don't know, Freddie was a D O T worker here in Henry County who was tragically killed in an accident. The dedication will take place at the D O T building located at 533 Hampton Street in McDonough. And again, that's at 4:00 p.m. today. We invite you to join us for that. Monday, December 20th, at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular board meeting. Monday, December 20th, at 7:00 p.m., we will have the inauguration service for the newly elected commissioners for District 2 and 5 and the returning commissioner for District 4. The event will be held here at the County Administration Building located at 140 Henry Parkway in McDonough. And it will also be televised live on Charter Channel 14. The Tuesday, December 21st, meeting has been canceled. If there's no further business, come before this board. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bazler, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. We stand adjourned.